Okay, let's call to order this meeting of the Bellingham City Council Committee of the Whole. This afternoon, we have four items before us, before having a work session on the 2015-2016 budget, and then we'll adjourn to executive session. The first up this afternoon is a discussion of city legislative objectives for next year. The city of Bellingham, in partnership with Watcom County and the Port of Bellingham, will advocate for a shared legislative agenda during the upcoming session of the state legislature. Today, we have Brian Heinrich from the mayor's office to present to us. Brian?
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. You'll see the agenda that's in your packet. I believe it's very similar to what we sent out, or I sent out, several weeks ago. I think I would draw your attention to a couple of changes. One is the 415 in working with our partners at the port and the county. We thought there was value in having a goal statement for what we're trying to achieve. I think you all are very aware that it's going to be a challenging budget environment at this, in Olympia. And I think we wanted to try and elevate the conversation a little bit and articulate why we're advocating for what we are. So, this is our agenda as proposed with the port and county. And I, we're asking for your approval today. I would offer that it is still draft. The other entities haven't considered this in their respective bodies as of yet. There might be some wordsmithing opportunities yet, but this is the general direction that we would like to move forward with. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mayor Kelly?
And just to add, as we did last year, this is our joint agenda that deals with the larger issues, mainly around funding. We, as always, we work with our lobbyists and with the Association of Washington Cities on specific things that the city may be interested in that aren't necessarily part of our joint agenda. So, this does not limit us in what we'd like to talk about. It just puts forward one agenda that the whole county is supportive of.
Brian, before I take questions, would you mind reading through what these items are so people watching at home have an idea of what we're talking about?
Sure, thank you. Model Toxic's control account, largely environmental cleanup fund, infrastructure funding options. What we're looking for there is continuing to support a statewide transportation plan. In addition, there's investments that occur at local governments with respect to wastewater, stormwater, and related. We'd like to see those investments continue. Community and economic development initiatives. There's a number of items listed under there that, again, support community development, other economic development-related ideas. Aquatic invasive species control, that's, as Councilmember Vargas mentioned, that still remains a goal at the state level, to have a more comprehensive program. Restored revenue sharing measures. Over the last couple of years, things like liquor tax revenue and then emerging marijuana revenue, and then funding from the Public Works Assistance Account, those dollars have been diverted from local governments. Thank you, Mayor.
Take him! Take him!
And then criminal justice and social services funding. It's a little bit of an emerging item in working with the county, drawing attention to maintaining funding and support for criminal justice assistance, and also continuing to advocate for housing, substance abuse, and mental health-related funding. I know you all are aware that's, it's very much at the forefront of the work that we're doing right now. And then finally, rail safety, again, an emerging issue, but one that's probably going to continue to be a focal point for us. So, looking at increasing resources for first responders and emergency management efforts.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from Council? Michael?
Well, first of all, I'm glad that we're looking at this before the other jurisdictions. Last time, it came to us last and was difficult to add. So, I would like to suggest adding a few things that are, that I think would be good and I don't think would raise any objections. I could do that now, but I think I want to ask first, what about the other suggestions that were offered that really are, maybe are more city-specific? Are we going to have a separate process for a smaller group that may be only of our interest and not so much interest of our partners?
That's a good question.
And I think that's what I was trying to express, is that I think council members said that these are things that are important. We don't need anyone's permission to advocate for those things, so, yes.
So, for example, here's an item that I would like added to infrastructure funding options, that if we don't add it to this list, I'd like it on our own list. And that has to do with, I just wrote down, robust funding program for non-automotive transportation infrastructure projects. We talked about the Bicycle Master Plan, I think you yourself, Mayor Kelly, mentioned this morning. You know, our rate of progress depends on whether or not there is any matching grant funding from the state level. When a transportation package is considered at the state level, it'd be good if there was a non-automotive eligibility in there. One of the difficulties in the past is it's easier to build big roads and harder to build smaller projects. So, I would add that to our lobbying list. If there's going to be discussion of transportation funding, I'd like it to include those non-motorized ones, and I'd like to add it as a bullet point to this document.
It would be my suggestion that the transportation package at the state level does include all of those. I think that we could emphasize that from the city of Bellingham. You know, gas tax, and that's what they're looking at right now, is restricted in its use. So, putting that on the list potentially could put us in a position of having to change the state constitution about what we could use this for. In this legislative session, I don't think that that's probably a possibility, so I would say let's add that to our local agenda and make sure that our lobbyists know that as we talk about transportation, that's a priority for the city of Bellingham.
Another bullet point that I'd like to either add or modify is the last one, has to do with rail safety. Part of the discussion with rail safety isn't just that we need the support and training for first responders, but also that we advocate at state, and mostly the federal level, for increased safety standards for the rail cars themselves, as well as beefed-up inspection regimes based upon the kind of cargo that's being carried. If you're carrying flammable cargo, you might inspect twice as often, or something like that. I'd kind of like to add that either, again, under the rail safety here as a separate bullet point, and if not, at least to our own individual ones. So, I would suggest a second bullet point that says, advocate for heightened rail car safety standards and track inspection requirements.
I guess what I'd say, Michael, is I wouldn't want to limit it to that. I'm participating on the AWC Rail Safety Committee. There's a whole list of recommendations that I'm happy to share with the council. If we start limiting it to certain issues, then I think, in my mind, it's better for us to support the package that's going to go forward to the state and federal government. So, if there's some way to say to do that...
But we have limited it. This is more limited right now. I'm trying to expand it.
Well, and I'm just saying, don't expand it by limiting it. Expand it by saying, potentially, support the rail safety recommendations that come out of the AWC Committee. There's, there's safety in numbers, or strength in numbers, and that way, we're not, we're even limiting it less than what you're suggesting.
It seems to me we're limiting ourselves to what the consensus opinion is, and if we have a different opinion, if there's an element that's left out that we think should be left in, I don't know why we'd yoke ourselves to that.
Well, then I think that we need to know all the elements, and maybe I should present those to you, and we could add it to our individual city requests, but it certainly is going to be very comprehensive, because all the cities along the rail route have the same concerns that we have.
That's great, but I'd like to add it to our legislative objective, hopefully shared with the county and the port.
So, if I understand correctly, however, Kelly's saying there would be a lot more things we would be asking for than just that item, and you wouldn't want us to limit ourselves to that.
That's what I'm trying to say. If you don't like the limitation of talking about first responders, which is one of the biggest issues I hear from the public, then let's not limit us to a couple little things. Let's say something bigger than that. And if you would like some, a suggestion about different language that's more inclusive, I'd be happy to work with Michael on coming up with something.
If we could just broaden that last bullet point, because right now, it is narrowly on the first responder issue and not the other issues.
I'm going to call on myself here. So, is, maybe Brian or Kelly, you can explain why this is the one that came to the top for a shared priority on rail safety?
Yes. I think the, where we're at right now with respect to rail safety for first responders and emergency management, is we know that the state legislature is very interested in that and has the resources. It is a state issue. The rail car, rail car standards, one equally is important. That's determined largely by the federal, federal agencies. There's a number of agencies that, that work on that issue. So, knowing that this was going to go to the state legislature, we wanted it to focus on things that we know that they can control in Olympia. It's a, it's a great point to, to talk about that safety car, or the rail car safety issue, and that's one that we've been engaged with Congressman Larson's office, Senator Murray's office, to continue to have that conversation and make sure they understand where we're at as a city on that federal issue. So, that's why this reflects that.
Okay. Michael, do you want to make a request of your fellow council members?
Sure, I'll try. I would like to move, recommend modifying the last bullet point under rail safety to broaden the language, to make it more inclusive beyond just the first responder and EMS issues. And I'm not suggesting language at this point. We could work on that.
And I guess the question I'd have for clarification is, are we asking then to, on this particular bullet, combine state and federal requests? I think that's the point that Brian was trying to make, is what's in front of the legislature that we want to focus our lobbying efforts on, in addition to our federal legislation? I mean, we can, we can obviously do that also. I mean, it's very important. It was just trying to give our lobbyists some direction about the priority we have for what the state actually could maybe do this next legislative session.
First, I see no harm in mentioning rail car and track inspection standards, even though the document goes to the state legislature.
Looks like potentially Terry and Roxanne want to say something? No, just Terry?
Well, just that, since we don't need a second, I guess to go forward with it. Michael had brought it forward, I'll just speak to it. I think since the mayor had talked about us being able to have a separate city listing, and I would prefer, one, I would like to hear the AWC's rundown on the rail safety, because I'm familiar with, I think, most of it, but I think would be a good thing to have a presentation on that, that we have that and look to adding that to the list of cities.
Okay.
Legislative priorities.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else?
There's nothing that says we can't have a federal agenda.
Right.
I mean, we can do that also.
Okay, well, I just wrote rail car safety under federal here, I guess, to bring up and talk about another time. Pinky, did you have something to add?
An additional point, not in, not in regard to this.
Okay, anything else on this item? Okay, seeing none? Did you have something, another item? Okay, Pinky?
Brian, I'm just curious, under community and economic development initiatives, we talked about a multi, multifamily tax exemption. Does that fall under support tax incentives for research and development efforts?
No, that's a good question, and it really speaks to, I think, the idea that this document is not exhaustive for what the city's interested in. So, multifamily tax exemptions, that's something that we track and we follow. I think additionally, what I would add to that list is, is things like supporting the state housing trust fund. So, those are issues that we, we track and follow and advocate for. They're not necessarily shared by the three entities, so it's, it is a little bit of a moving target in that regard. And it's, it's something, again, that this gives our lobbyists some guidance, but in addition, I think, I send out their session report, and as the session continues, right, the number of bills that they're monitoring goes from, you know, the, in the tens and twenties to the hundreds of pieces of legislation. And so, what we try and do is give them some markers to say, here's some areas of interest that we, as a city, are interested in, and ours hopefully is complementary to AWC's and vice versa. But that this is the agenda that the three entities say, start here, focus on these, and then we fill in the gaps, so to speak.
And also, yeah, the legislative agenda, the, the updates that they give us, we can always take a position on a specific bill that we haven't even thought of yet, that's not part of our, that isn't part of anything specific. That always is an opportunity to do that. In fact, it's a good idea to do that, as legislators are listening to the testimony, one of the city things, you can send something in all the time.
You know, we get these Friday memos from Brian during session that I don't know about everyone else, but sometimes I have time to open. I guess, maybe I'll say, if there's an intuitive time to make a presentation to council about maybe what's occurred in the first month of session and where it looks like we're going, or first half of session and where it looks like we're going, that might be useful as well. Kind of forces us to check in and look at it, instead of trusting us to make a good choice with our email. Roxanne?
Yeah, and also, just further that, that I feel like our lobbyists and our ability to watch can help us affect these outcomes just as much as anything that we would do, you know, ahead of time to advocate for this.
The other thing I'm going to ask, and I won't be here, but, is that maybe this council spends a little time prepping before we go down there this year to lobby? The few times I've gone, I felt ineffectual, and it might have been my own feelings, but I didn't feel like I was really equipped with my top three requests from the city, and this is why, and this is us as a unified front saying why. And it might be good if we could do that in the future, for, for the four or five of us that end up going down.
That would be really...
That would be really good, and also, as those weekly notices come out, because they get really, really, really long, it might be helpful if we highlighted things that people need testimony on, or things that fit into our agenda, so that you, we keep track of it, but so that you can, you can keep track of it also.
Yeah.
Because the, the best time to talk to legislators is before session, and that's kind of the problem, is we haven't figured out the good time. This is an election year, makes it more difficult. Sometimes we try to catch them in between election and Olympia, but it is good to catch them outside of session, and we could definitely develop, if you're interested, a more robust lobbying session for our legislators based on city council interest and the amount of time you'd like to invest in that, just having conversations with them in district, where you could actually take them someplace and show them what's going on.
That'd be great. That MOTCA talk we had with Governor Inslee is a nice example of what we can do locally on, around an issue, choosing one to talk about at a time, maybe. Michael, did you have anything else to add?
I do, but I think maybe we should dispose of this, and then I'll bring up something related.
Okay, Jean?
I was just going to move approval of the legislative, 2015 legislative objectives. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Jack Weiss absent, excused absence. Michael?
On a related note, I have a question first. I sent out to the rest of the council, the Watcom Council Government's high priority transportation request list. It's, it's not on here, but I'm just wondering how we imagine, I mean, as we, as we go down to legislature, I know the way we've used this document is we've gone into the room and we've handed them this piece of paper. It seems to me that another piece of paper we might want to deliver is that list of priority projects. I don't know if there's been any thinking by the administration on how that list will work, because three of the four high priority projects, either were directly in Bellingham or very much related to Bellingham.
And I think that it's very important for us to, first of all, alert our legislators right away, to make sure that Tom Parker, who is the lobbyist for the COG, has our, our specific list, even though he lobbies for the COG, Roxanne and myself and...
Jack?
Michael.
Oh.
Michael.
Yeah.
We're part of, yeah, we're part of that, so I think that it's very important to do, to make sure they get that information early. The tendency has been to wait till the end, when decisions are already made, and then it's difficult. And obviously, get it, get it to them, why don't we do this too? But the earlier we get them information, the better off we are.
Michael? Yeah, go ahead.
So, what we're going to hand up with is this piece of paper, that we can deliver to the legislatures in person, as well as maybe the COG list. I'd like us to be able to deliver a third piece of paper, which is a city-only list of items, and so, I would move to request the administration to schedule an agenda time to talk about what the city-only list might include.
Okay. You have a motion?
Yes.
And a second discussion? Nope? Oh, you're just ready to vote? Well, I'll speak to it. I think it's a good idea for us to schedule some time to talk about what our city-only priorities might be. Okay, so, seeing nothing else, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Jack Weiss absent.
Just to that last point, we'll invite our lobbyist, Tom McBride, Ben Buckholz, to attend as well to...
That'd be great.
Help that conversation.
Thank you.
And perhaps Tom Parker.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our next item this afternoon, we have a resolution recognizing the second Monday in October as Coast Salish Day. This proposal seeks to recognize the second day in October as Coast Salish Day in the city of Bellingham. The proposal recognizes the historical trauma that many cultures, namely Coast Salish populations, have experienced due to an era of colonization. It also points to the opportunity to celebrate the Coast Salish people, including the Nuksek Indian Tribe and the Lummi Nation, who have lived, worked, and played in Bellingham since time immemorial. And this item is presented today by Roxanne Murphy, Terry Borneman, and Jack Weiss is listed here, although he has an excused absence today. Roxanne, or Terry?
Well, I just really thank the city council for being willing to consider this and to think about it. Just so the community knows, we have received such an array of feedback about this, everything from, pick another day to do this, to young tribal members who are expressing that they are still bullied at school because of what they look like, to just general community members from Bellingham and tribal members who are highly supportive of this. So, I'm just highly hopeful that we can do right by the negativity that all of these cultures, including Coast Salish people, have experienced, that we can start to rewrite some history, and to hopefully create a day of celebration about the cultures and the indigenous people of this area.
Terry?
Yeah, and sharing this, bringing this forward with Roxanne, I was very happy to bring this forward. We have a shared history with the Coast Salish people here. We share resources with, in Watcom County, with the Lummi Nation, with the Nuksek Nation. To the south of us, we have the Swaminish, and we all share resources here. We have a shared history. Some of the history has not always been all of that good. It's not been that good. It's really improved with time, but I remember an incident when I first came here of calling 911 about somebody finding, they're downtown, and they needed medical help, and, and this was a long time ago, mind you, but I had the question of, was it an Indian? And I told them it was none of their goddamn business, get somebody down there. But it was that kind of attitude that we used to have in this area, and we've come a long ways with it. But it's time that we recognize the, the need for cooperation, and the cooperation that we've had with the Coast Salish nations, and I think this is, you know, just one little step of recognizing what the valuable contributions of their culture to this, to this area, and recognize their long noble history. So, I'm glad to be able to support this, and I would hope my fellow council members will vote today to pass this as well.
Thank you, Terry. And you, Jean?
Yes, when this first came forward, I thought, oh, oh, here we go, look out. I mean, we're going to get it from a whole bunch of people, but I was really amazed at how this community has come together, and the emails from Bellingham citizens were overwhelming in favor of this, so it would be, you know, it's the right thing to do, it's the right time, there's a lot of history here, and it's good that Roxanne had enough courage to bring this forward, and I will support it.
Great, thanks, Jean. Michael?
I'll be supporting it too. I just want to make a few comments. One is that actually Columbus Day is not an official holiday in Bellingham or Washington State, so we're not making anything go away. There is no holiday here in Bellingham, and this would be a, they could find holiday. You know, my family's been here for five generations, but I have a sense of history that goes deeper than that, and the people that were here in the land that I call home were Coast Salish people. I feel connected to their past. I see no reason why all of Bellingham can't subway that connection. Our family commissioned a carving from Kevin, a Swinnumish carver. It's part of our family, it's part of the culture. I grew up here in the northwest. The names we use for our schools and our streets and our places, they're, they're Coast Salish names. It's part of our natural, local cultural heritage. I think it's highly appropriate to recognize that, and not just as something in the past, but as a living people today. They didn't go away, they're still here, and we need to, I think, recognize that, and this is a fine way of doing it. And it's not, I, I actually don't, I'm not really happy with focusing on Columbus. I don't, I don't want to even get into that fight. I mean, I know very well what he did with the Arawak peoples, Metano peoples, when he met them, but I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about my connection, our connection, to this land and the people who are here before us.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you.
I do want to thank Roxanne for bringing this forward. I think this was courageous, and we have received a huge amount of community support toward this initiative. I think it's an opportunity for all of us to move forward together and turn this day into a celebration for all of our community to enjoy together, so I will be supporting it.
Okay, and Roxanne again?
I just hope I can make you all laugh. I mean, I had no idea that this initiative would get such broad media coverage, no clue. And I have just personally been feeling like I'm getting away with something, because all these fancy news reporters keep saying Coast Salish and Indigenous Peoples' Day over and over, so I've just been grateful for the fact that we've been able to bring attention to this, and who knows, maybe this is something that could happen statewide or even nationwide, we shall see. I really, really want to thank this council for supporting it.
I want to speak before we vote, if I may. Briefly, I guess I'll just add, you know, when you're running for office, people ask you what you would use your platform for that's good in the world, and it seems like there, when you're up here, it kind of feels like there are actually few opportunities to do that in a meaningful way. A lot of the work we do is real, just the work of the city, the business of the city, and this is one of the few opportunities I feel like we get to do a moral and just thing with our vote, and I thank you, Roxanne, for giving us the opportunity very much. And it's one of the easiest votes to make, ever, so thank you.
That being said, and seeing no other discussion?
Can I make a motion that we would consider adopting this resolution at tonight's council meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Jack Weiss absent. Okay, moving on, our third item this afternoon is a presentation, information only. Watcom Mountain Biking Coalition's contributions to the community and the economic impacts of mountain biking to the city of Bellingham. This is something we talk about a lot, and it's cool, we're going to get some tangible information this afternoon, so, thanks, Terry, for bringing this idea forward. And we've got the Watcom Mountain Biking Coalition to present their organization's contributions to the city, and I'll turn it over to you, Terry, to introduce.
Yeah, well, basically, I'd just like to introduce Matt Durant, from the Watcom Mountain Bike Coalition. They've recently done a presentation to the county council, and I wanted to, and called and asked about doing a presentation here, and I was glad to bring that forward, because it is such a valuable, they are such a valuable resource to the community. And so, I'll turn it over to Matt for his presentation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, you have to, I have a little cold here, but you have to, we appreciate the opportunity to have, be able to present in front of the council, city council here, to, really, the purpose being what we do for the community and who we're about. We've been, we've been around for a lot of years. As you mentioned, I'm the president of the Watcom Mountain Bike Coalition. I'm also, my side job is the principal at Mount Baker High School, so, so I'm here on a little hiatus from that. What you see in front of you here is our, the mission statement that we use to drive all of our decisions as an organization, and it's to preserve and enhance non-motorized trail access in Watcom County through stewardship, education, and advocacy. Now, I will also say, I was, I was informed that we only have 10 minutes, so I'm going to really buzz through a few slides and just, and just... really buzz through a few slides and just, and just, I think, I hope you, I'm pretty sure you all have this in your packets, so you can see that, so I'll just skip over some stuff or go through quickly. Anyways, as an organization, we started as a tight group of mountain bikers, affectionately known as the Wimps. That's who a lot of people still know us as. We underwent a name change a couple of years ago to be a little more broader and encompass, you know, a little more, so on the professional side of things.
What was Wimps? What did that stand for?
It's, it was an acronym within an acronym, it was the Watcom Independent Mountain Peddlers.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, yeah. So anyways, we've been building and maintaining trails in Watcom County for 28 years, and we've been the official stewards of that little-known hill outside of town, or partially in town, Galbraith Mountain, for the past 10 years. Here is a list of our board of directors, and just a note on this, and you can all read it yourselves, but I will highlight that we underwent a restructuring two years ago, where we went from having a president, vice president, treasurer, secretary format to more of a director role, and that was in order to become more efficient and to cut out some of the redundancies between all of us. We also expanded the board to seven, seven members as well. This is a, I think, a really important thing for people to see, and this is really kind of encompasses what we're about as an organization. But we have 15 organized trail days every year, so we have 60 to 80 people who make it to these trail days that are working, you know, six, seven hours. You can see in 2014, we had 7,000 hours, plus thousands more ad hoc, not, of people out there doing maintenance in areas that aren't part of official trail days out there. So we have that, 2013, 5,000 hours, and you can see below, just as far as social media kind of opportunities and things that we have, subscribers and so on to our organization. Trail maintenance, I won't get into a lot of detail here, this is just what do we do when we're building trails? You know, we, we use International Mountain Bike Association standards to build trails, and the real thing to focus on is the sustainable trail tread. That's what we've emphasized heavily over the last five years, and that's to, you know, eliminate all the low spots and deal with some of the erosion issues that have come up. Stewardship, these are currently, these are the trails and areas that we steward as an organization. Galbraith Mountain has 43 miles, we do a number of trails in Larrabee State Park, we also Blanchard Mountain, we do a couple trails there, Watcom County Parks and Bellingham City Parks, as you know, the Dirt Jump Park is something that we steward, and then also the Miranda Trail, that's not on here, that is that Birch Street access from, from right up, that's another one that we do as well. We're highlighting Galbraith Mountain because it is kind of our most notable thing that we do, and it's a nationally recognized trail network, if not internationally known throughout, and been written up in a number of magazines. But it is, you know, we have our own $4 million liability insurance policy, we maintain all the trails, currently there's 43 miles of trails, most of them are two to three feet wide. The majority of trails, and I think this is an important part to recognize, because it's oftentimes a misconception that only mountain bikers use Galbraith Mountain, but truly, you know, you see all users up there, you know, hikers, walkers, bikers, runners, everything. And the majority of the trails are for the, for everybody. We coordinate weekly with the loggers up there, Janice He, we have a great relationship with them as far as being able to close down trails, communicate to the public what's closed and what's open. And a year and a half ago, they, when the first logging happened, 23 miles of trails were impacted, and we were able to open, reopen those in a pretty short order, so it was an impressive thing for us. Another thing that we're really moving into also is our education programs that we're trying to pick up on. We have a number of service learning projects that take place, we have crews that go up on Galbraith, and they're shown basically how to do trail maintenance, they're taught about the local environment and things of that nature, and we do it with Fairhaven Middle School, Watcom Middle School, Windward High School, we just did Lennon Christian a couple weeks ago, and we do a number of Eagle Scout projects that they work on the hill. And there's also developing some after-school clubs, and Silver Beach has an active mountain biking club, Car Kosher also has an active mountain biking club right now. There's gonna be one at Birchwood and Wade King and Watcom Middle, actually Watcom Middle School just started, I saw them the other day. They just started their first time the other day, but we, this past summer, we trained some instructors to be certified mountain bike instructors to be able to run these school programs. So they're the ones that are coordinating that, and it's, it's been pretty impressive to see, see the kids up there on the hill. Also, in collaboration with Everybody Bikes, that we promote bike safety at all of the local elementary schools, and that's been a really successful, successful adventure for us. We do a number of community events, this is a picture of our Shoot the Trails event, which we just actually had this past weekend, and once again, it was a packed house, and it was amateur film and photograph competition that we run, it's our fourth year, and it's very well-attended. Some other things I'm just gonna highlight, we do Take a Kid Mountain Biking Day, we just did at Lake Patton a couple of weeks ago, and that was attended by approximately 40, 40 kids and families came out to take part in that. We do Shoot the Trails, and the other one that some people may know is the Boundary Bay Galbraith Beer Series, that they name some beers after, trails, and then we do some other things. We help out with Tourney Watcom, the Ski to Sea and Patton Pedal and Traverse as well. Advocacy, I'm not gonna read through all of these, this is one of my cutting slides, but you can see that we are, you know, active in a lot of different arenas and with a number of different land managers. This is nationally recognized trail network, you can see up here in our corner, Galbraith Mountain is the most recognized area here in Washington State, and I would say probably a lot of other places as well. So this is just a visual to show what we do here in the town. Some of these links that you have, and we can send you an electronic version if you don't, because you might wanna watch these videos. These are just some locals, some locals, but also professionals that come down to ride our trails and then end up filming them as well. So if you want some entertainment, it's a good, good place to have it. Some of the economic benefits, once again, I'm not gonna read, I won't read through everything on here, but this was a survey we put together approximately a year ago, recognizing that we don't have much data for what recreation provides here to our local economy, and so it was our attempt at trying to start getting some data. So we had 749 respondents, we ran a Survey Monkey survey, and it was on for approximately two months that we did it. I think, you know, some of the things we were trying to focus on were who comes to Bellingham to spend money, and also who lives in Bellingham because of the quality of life and the different recreational opportunities we have here. So that was kind of the main purpose of this survey. And once again, I, I won't go through all of these, but this one is an important one, this is economic benefits elsewhere, and there's a number of communities who have chosen to take recreation and make it a large part of their economy and what they do to draw people to the area, and we're, and we're lucky enough to have the natural resources and the environment and the infrastructure in place in a lot of ways, sort of make some things happen. So these are, I believe you have these articles in your packets, if not, we'll get them to you. But Squamish BC, which is, you know, two hours over the border, you can see that in 26 weekends riding, we extrapolated, you know, over to that period of time with a $4 million impact. Oak Ridge, Oregon, a $1.2 million impact mountain bike Oregon weekends, that's two weekends a year, and that's what they bring to the economy. Bend, Oregon, the High Cascade 100 Race, that's one, that's one weekend, and that's what kind of bring, what they bring to their economy. Ogden, Utah, you can see, they made a decision to invest in recreation, so it talks about the business investment that came in, in order to turn a fledgling town into, you know, a much more developed area. And then Moab, Utah, a lot of people know that area, annually, they, it's about eight and a half million dollars that they see an impact. So I think that's a, that's the one that I'm gonna highlight on the economic benefits, or possibilities of economic benefits. Some of the businesses that we have in town that use Galbraith Mountain specifically to recruit people to the area, these are a few of those. If you notice any houses that are for sale anywhere around Galbraith Mountain, talks about easy access to the trail network and, you know, all of those things too, so those are used as well. Proposed projects, working, we've been working with the, you know, Watcom County Parks and the reconvenance, and we are very active in that, that process. Larrabee State Park, we have a 17 miles of proposed trails into them, and we're, that's going through a process now, but we're currently running some reroutes on their trails, we've, we've gotten permission to do that. We're working with the DNR up on Blanchard currently, so we've already started a connector, and we're gonna keep working on that. We work, we've been communicating with the city of Bellingham about some different pump tracks and skill zones, specifically trying to get them close to elementary schools and things like that, so you can have access for, so it's kind of like, it got brought up earlier, the parks, you know, issues and, and fundings and lack of money, well, you know, we offer ourselves to do these kind of things, to build and maintain that kind of stuff.
Sorry, Matt, what's a pump track?
What's that?
What's a pump track?
A pump track is, in short, if you've ever seen a BMX track, right, it, it's like that, it, it just has a bunch of hills on it, and it's meant to only pump and not pedal your bike, so it's a full-body workout, and it's meant to learn maneuverability, balance, and build endurance over time. Very safe, very safe. We're also working with the Forest Service and also Galbraith Trail Expansion on top of that. And our, our vision is continue to build and maintain what we have here and increase and advocate for more trails, and really a healthy lifestyle that we have here in Bellingham and what we bring. Another one is, we would love to be able to host world-class races and events, however, right? We're trying with being able to work in Larrabee and go that route, but we, we just don't necessarily have the areas to do that at this point. And in closing, we're gonna continue to promote mountain biking through stewardship, education, advocacy. I don't know, I don't know how well I did, but I think I-
You did great, yeah.
Usually have more comedy in there, but I'll do it.
Yeah. Questions, comments by council? A pinky?
I just had one comment, I just think it's amazing that you guys volunteer your time and do the works and really promote recreation, and I don't, we would not have this without you, so thank you very much, and please pass that on to everyone in your organization.
Yeah, definitely will, yeah. Thank you.
Michael?
I, I too appreciate the volunteer efforts, but I'm wondering in particular about your sustainable tread, and just the whole issue of rogue trails as opposed to sanctioned trails. I was up on Raptor Ridge, and there was some steep cut going straight down, switchbacks, I'm going, who put this in and when?
Yeah.
And hikers not gonna be running down that, so I assume it was some rogue mountain biker. So what is your role with regard to trying to actually decrease the impacts off-trail?
Yeah. You know, one of the things we work on is education, it's usually the best way to, for people to understand and change behaviors over time and why it's, why it hurts, whether it's our cause of getting more trails or the environmental impact. So, you know, we, we do have a lot of tentacles out in the trail-building community, and so when we see trails, we put the word out to try to figure out who's doing it, and if not, at least get the word out on why they should stop doing those sort of things and how it's hurting the efforts, you know, the greater efforts that we're putting forth. If, if it's in an area that we're stewarding the lands like Galbraith, then we address that, but if it's in parklands when we're not the official stewards, then we can only go really the education route of things. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think we have that problem on city-owned property, just people making trails.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it, and they often choose the worst places to put them in terms of impact on, for erosion or for wetlands, you know?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's just to increase, and a lot of times it shows, you know, the need for access also, you know, when you have these kind of things that crop up, sometimes they're cropping up in areas where the access isn't as great, or the variety of trails or so on, so.
Terry?
Yeah, I just wanna, wanna thank you for, for the presentation and the information, because I think a lot of people in the community aren't aware, they think of mountain biking, you know, just as riding the trails, but not the economic benefit that it has really become in this community, and the economic benefit that can continue to grow in. Been kind of lucky, Mark Lee is a neighbor, and he's been telling me about the importance of Galbraith Mountain for a lot of years, and so, but a lot of people aren't, aren't aware of these figures that you're bringing forward, and, and it can be a real big economic driver here for tourism and other things, and so, you know, applaud you for all the work that you're doing and what you're doing towards the community with it, it's a great organization.
Thank you.
Roxanne?
I also really wanna thank you, you know, I'm a road biker, and ever since I got here, your community has begged me to get involved in mountain biking and with the trail riding and such, and for some reason, I'm still terrified of the thing that makes mountain biking so cool, flying down a rocky and woody trail downhill. So maybe I should go to some of the middle school trainings to get all that. No, but thank you so much for everything you do for this community.
That's great, you're welcome.
Yeah, very much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the time, much appreciated.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm just, I've, thinking about my first mountain biking experience at Galbraith, flying over the handlebars five seconds from the end of the trail.
Well, at least you made it to the end, not the beginning.
And I will say, I felt like a real Belling hamster after that, so it was all good. Next up, we've got our city sources of revenue presentation from Brian Henshaw, Finance Director, and he will present a review and analysis of the multiple sources of revenue that the city programs for its operations, and these include tax levies, taxes, fees, and bonds. Wow, we have taxes in there twice.
You were almost as exciting as the mountain bikers, just right there, all right. I don't have any cool pictures like he does either, but I have graphs, all right.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Brian Henshaw, Finance Department, and basically, it's a compilation of all those things that you mentioned, hopefully it'll address some of the historical perspective, but also some of the questions that have come from council just over the last week since the mayor presented her preliminary budget. So I do want this to be interactive, so please ask questions as we go, do not, yeah, stand up, move around. It'll make it much more exciting. First, just because we're in between, the third quarter financial review and the forecast will take place at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is in two weeks. So today, this is just a quick snapshot summary, we're just closed September, this is the revenue side of September, and the financial statement should be online in about a week. But this, this is just a dashboard, and it's to show you by category the major revenue sources for the general fund. This is the budget, $12.2 million for sales tax, the current trend through nine months, and this is extrapolated out through the year based on our historical collection, so there's some seasonality in it, and it's forecasted out to the end of the year. So the, the two I've been talking about all year, sales tax and BNO tax, have been declining month over month all year long. We are currently forecasted to be, you know, just shy on the sales tax side, and then in the business tax side, substantially under budget this year, about $500,000, assuming that the last three months of the year are traditional as we normally do it. This funny color here are the positives on here, so water and sewer are slightly positive here. Most of this has to do with rate increases, and then also the change in water from non-metered to metered, so we see some differences in variability here in the billing cycles now. So we just had a big billing cycle for the driest part of the year, which was basically, you know, July, August, or August, September, depending on the cycle. Overall, though, you'll see the total of the general fund accounts are trending down, that's $740,000 from budget, so that's almost half percent or 1% of the entire general that's $740,000 from budget, so that's almost half percent or 1% of the entire general fund revenues of 70 million, so we are, this is not a good trend, obviously, and wherever we end up this year, you know, is our baseline then for next year. So this is part of the reason why we had a difficult time balancing not only 15, but also 16. One positive is real estate, so the sale of houses has continued to be strong. This is up substantially from last year of about $2.1 million, but down from the peak when we were collecting about $3.8 million in real estate tax. I think Gene was asking about this, we talked about last week. This is the increase in the percentages on where the allocations are in the general fund for expenditures. So you see, I went back to 2005, the general fund budget was $51 million. Next year's budget is just over $70 million, but where the change has been here is in public safety, so fire, police, and judicial services has gone from 49% to 59% of that total. So that is 41 million out of the 71 million is spent on those three items right there. Another way to look at the general fund expenditures is by category, again, a comparison between 2005 and 2015, not a surprise here, salaries and benefits has grown from 66% to 71%, largely due to benefits, but also salaries and COLAs that employees of the city receive. Slightly different way to look at this is salaries and benefits as compared to general fund revenues. So before, it was as a percentage of the expenditures, this is as percentage of the revenues. And just to show you, here we were, back in 2007, we were about $70 million. The recession hit, and it took us all the way back to 2014 to get back up to that 70 million, but during that same time period, salaries and benefits has continued to grow. We had a slight decline here, we had a few less employees, actually. Salaries and benefits is now forecasted to be about 72% of 2016's budget. Oops, sorry about that. So these are just two snapshots, a summary of both the general fund, this is the preliminary 2015 budget, as the mayor's proposed and presented last week, the general fund revenues of $70.3 million, and then the breakdown of each component. So salaries and benefits, again, 71% of that, services is going to be 8%, inter-fund is all the different charges between all the different funds for fleet, facilities, all of those type charges. We have some interest, principal and interest is paying for the fire engines, and then supplies, and then intergovernmental costs. This is for medic one, jail, probationary fees. We also transfer money from the general fund to the water fund. It also subsidizes the cemetery to $221,000 and capital maintenance of $600,000. So that's what makes up this $5 million. And then citywide, this includes the general fund, it's not additive, but the budget this year is $230 million, so you'll see the first 37% go to salaries and benefits. Then we have services here, obviously, it's water and sewer. Storm services are the largest enterprise funds, but then we have $35 million of capital, inter-fund of another 27, but this is the one I wanted to highlight here, principal and interest debt payments, $11.4 million, or 5% of that is going to be taken up next year for debt service. We add all those up, we anticipate spending $235 million, so we have a deficit spending of $10.1 million. This is planned deficit spending, it has to do with prior funding, we have bonds outstanding that we're still spending down. We also have reserves where we have a capital project, multi-year project, and/or land acquisition where we've saved money up, and now we anticipate spending more this coming year than we would take in, so that's the $10 million. So that's mainly coming out of reserves in next year's budget at this point. So limited tax general obligation bonds are the bonds that we issue with the full support of all of the taxing and fees and different funds from the city. We have these outstanding currently, the 2005 are remediation in the solid waste fund. The 2011 is the qualified energy conservation bonds, which we issued to do HVAC and heating projects throughout the city that needed to be done. The 2012 refunding consists of the sportsplex, the civic and aquatic stadium remodels and projects, and also the PFD city-issued bonds. And then this year, we've added this little bit, $1 million to purchase six ambulances, and this is through state funding, but it's considered part of our general obligation bond. So the city has a total of $26.7 million of LTGO bonds outstanding, $7.7 million of it is for the PFD, which we are responsible for, and then the PFD also has some debt outstanding. People want to ask about the capacity, we have a lot of capacity, we have $100 million of additional non-voted debt capacity, and on top of that, another $100 million of voted debt capacity. The dilemma is not the capacity, it's the revenue sources that would be used to pay that down, so it would come out of existing revenue sources, or we would have to identify new revenue sources in order to pay that. Does that all make sense? In addition to general obligation bonds, we have water and sewer revenue bonds. All right? Yeah. So the water and sewer enterprise funds have issued a number of bonds, most recently to pay for the wastewater treatment expansion project, but there's other projects that are identified in those bonds. We have $70.8 million of outstanding debt, this is existing debt only. They do anticipate issuing more bonds in 2016. At this time, we're not anticipating issuing any bonds in 2015, but there's the rate study that was done in 2012, and the current capital plan anticipates $22 million of additional water and sewer bonds in 2016 for projects. And we'll talk about more of that in the capital discussions of the budget. In addition to that, I've mentioned this before, but some of the grants are being replaced with grants and loans, so we've taken advantage of that again in Public Works. We have a couple for daylighting the creeks, Bakerview Overpass Expansion, and then the regional stormwater, and then this I&amp;I project is for Texas and Columbia Water Main Replacements that is coming up. And these are a combination of grants and loans, and I just charted it to show you that we're up to about $7.4 million of this type of loan, and the peak here in the next couple of years between now and 2023 is just over $900,000 a year. In addition, this year, when we put out the request for the departments for capital requests in the next six years, we had a grand total of almost $500 million of requests. I can tell you that we've gone through a lot of these, anything that's not funded from an enterprise fund has been scaled back or postponed, so the general fund portions of 15 and 16s are much smaller than this, and we'll talk about that in the individual departments and also the capital budgets as we're going forward. But there's a lot of needs or requests out there for additional capital projects citywide, that's citywide. In addition, I've showed this slide before, we have several unfunded liabilities, so all of these up here are contingent liabilities of the city. They are not currently being taken care of in the budget, at least to the needs that are shown here. We have about $600,000 going to capital maintenance citywide, but the estimated needs for that is over $1 million a year. Environmental remediation is for the four projects down on the waterfront, this is the gross total. We anticipate and have received some state grants on MOTCA grants, but there is a large portion of these that is still unfunded. And then the PFD debt service, this is the $9.9 million of debt that the PFD, Public Facilities District, actually issued by themselves, and I'll go into more detail on that, but there's a shortfall projected in 2019. And then fire and police pension, this is the left pension for those officers and firefighters that worked between 1970 and 1977. And waterfront infrastructure, this is the unfunded portion of the waterfront infrastructure that's been identified in the first couple phases of that project. So I wanted to graph out, this is the debt structure for the Public Facilities District, and this is a confusing line of the debt service, and it goes up and down because up through 2013, this is the actual expenditures, and then this is going to be forecasted according to our bonds. But the bonds of the Public Facility District were all, both backloaded, meaning that the payments go up as the bond went out, and that was to give us time to have the sales tax grow in the city. So this is the debt service of the actual. About here, we started being concerned with recession, and we changed it to a variable rate, and the variable rate, as interest rates have declined, their payments have actually declined, but then we fixed it now. So when they issued the bonds, they assumed that between 2023 here and 2027, when the program expires, that sales tax were going to go up 4.5% every single year, and there would be no corrections or changes to that. The reality is, is this line here, we started out very well, the recession hit, and then it took us five years to just get back level to where we were before the recession hit. And so, as you could see before, they were going to bank this and then use it to pay the debt service out here where we didn't even have enough to pay for it, but now you see the gap is forecasted to be from this line all the way up to this line, so that's anticipated to start happening in 2019, when the sales tax growth isn't going to be enough to pay for the debt service on those bonds. We've done what we could, we refunded the first issuing bonds. Legislative fix would be to expand the program beyond 2027, when the PFD, the RCWs have it being sunset, or we would need to issue additional debt that would lengthen that payment out, but the rebate that we get from the state ends in 2027 now, so unless there's a change there, there will be a shortfall, and we'll have to make some of that up from a different funding source. Now we'll talk about some of the revenue sources, this is the property tax distribution for the current year. The county is working, the assessor's working, and we'll be presenting a little bit more information, but this, the timing is always where we have to vote on the property tax levy in November, and we don't get all of the information until December, so we're always estimating and forecasting, but this is the current distribution. The city receives just about 24% of it, Bellingham Schools is 39, the state is 23, and then the city's portion is broken down, 14% goes to the general fund, almost 5% to Greenways, fire and police pension is another 2%, and the housing levy is 3% of the amount that we collect from that. This shows the percentages, as I just described over here, of the money coming in, and this is the levy rate for each of those items. Greenways goes through 2016, the affordable housing levy goes through 2019, the RDA is the revenue development area down on the waterfront, and that's another program for lift. We get part of the increase from the property tax and sales tax increase in the waterfront development area, and we're getting up to $1 million of additional funding from the state for that infrastructure down on the waterfront.
What does the Transportation Benefit District show up?
That's the sales tax.
Sales tax, oh, sales tax, right, okay.
I can show you that one, too.
No, that's fine, that's-
Yeah. We'll talk about that a little bit, though, I've combined some of these two, so. Again, I put this one up here, this is the levy amount and the dollars of the current ones, again, when they expire. The statutory limit for the city is $3.60 per thousand, and I would have to back out 2/3 of this and add it to it. So we have about a buck 20 of levy available as a city, based on this year's statutory limits, but we do need to start thinking about the other taxing jurisdictions, so the home levy is actually its own taxing jurisdiction for 2/3 of that. The community forest also started a levy this year, and then there's talk from the county about a jail and an EMS, either levy or sales tax combination to fund for those two things. Fire station is with District 8, some sort of collaboration, shared facility merger as we go through a management consolidation there. The library, and then the school districts are, both have at least preliminary discussions about potential levies coming up in the next year or two, and there might be more, that's the only ones I'm aware of right now. It's to show you that the water is crowded. Then I'll talk about restricted revenue, and again, this isn't all of the restricted revenues, but it does go back to 1991 for the parks, and it's just to show you that today's restricted revenues, we've identified all of these as either restricted by policy or legislatively restricted. We've combined a lot here, this one does have the TBD on it, Gene, the home fund, the peg fund, the watershed portion of that fee, but it's just to show you how it's continued to be layered upon, I think Terry said it well when he said, how deep a well is it? Because all of this is coming out of, you know, existing taxpayers and existing people in Bellingham, but this year, we'll collect just over $18 million just for these categories of the items. And just to show you a real cool graph, restricted revenue as a percent of the general fund, so again, it went back to 1991, general fund revenue was just under $30 million, and over that time period up to 2014, we're right now at $70 million. All of that restricted revenue looks just like that, it's grown from less than 5% to 26% of the general fund restricted revenues. So we are taking in a lot of additional revenue, it just happens to be programmed for those specific projects. And then there's some conversations about reserves, how much do we need, what are they for? So I went to the Government Finance Officers Association website, purpose of reserves are, you know, they've narrowed it down to these five main ones. Plan for contingencies, obviously, the recession, no one forecast a 14% decrease in sales tax revenue, so it's a good thing we had reserves when the recession hit. Rating agencies look at it, we are AA+ rating, bonded, our rating from the bonding agency is AA+, that's S&amp;P's, that's the same as the state of Washington, so when we go out and have to borrow money, issue debt, we get a favorable rating, that's one thing we want to maintain and keep. It can be used to avoid paying interest expense, if we didn't have to borrow money to do all the projects, and we waited and did them at a slower pace, or saved for them first, we might not have to pay interest expense. Certainly, we don't want to do it for operating expenditures. It's possible to invest those reserves. Most recently, the investment portfolio has only returned about 1%, so that's a decrease, but when the, you know, we were able to earn 3% and 4%, we were generating, you know, $3 to $4 million of general fund revenue, that's since declined to $1.1 million, but it's still a potential way to add additional revenues. And ensure cash availability is the last one. How much? Most of the research and best practices want you to first talk about how predictable your revenues are. So we have a diversified general fund from the four big ones, property tax, sales tax, utility taxes, and, oh, jeez, the last one. So we are well diversified, which saved us during the recession when sales tax went down. We did not have the decline like California did in property taxes, because ours is levied on dollars and not just the rate. Volatility, other than the recession, I think our volatility is pretty favorable, we're the regional shopping, we're somewhat isolated, we have Western in the hospital here for stable economy, plus a lot of shopping from up north, so those are all positives. Availability of other funds, if we had lines of credit, are we using them, do we have additional reserves that we could borrow from? Liquidity is also in our portfolio, our bonds and what we've invested in. So the GFOA has come out and said they want a minimum of two months. Our current policy is for 12%, which is about six weeks, so I'll show you on this graph here, this is what the policy was set in April of 2010, that's about $8.4 million. That, of course, goes up and down with our operating expenses, it's about six weeks. To get up to 16.7%, we'd need to be at about 12%. And so the difference between where we're estimating the year to be at 14 and here, you know, if we followed GFOA, we'd be about right here, we have a little bit of cushion here, but there's a lot of things that we don't know yet, where are we going to end up on the revenue side, our expense side, and this year in particular, we do not have many of our contracts signed for the coming year, so we have a very big unknown future liability for pay, and that can be a big one. Michael sent out an email over the weekend about general fund reserve details, so I put this together. There's a number of reasons why it doesn't tie out dollar for dollar. The first one is accounting. The financial statements that you see on all the reports are, that's on a cash basis, it's on periods 1 through 12. There's two more periods for the accounting world, 13 and 14, where we do a lot of adjustments for accruals, so- So wages, vacation pay, all those things happen. Investments, any accounts receivables, account payables happen in the two periods after. So the CAFR, which is the audited financial statement, doesn't match up with the financial statements that get published every single dollar at the end of the year. But the main thing is that on the ending reserves here, we've used the general fund reserves for a lot of different purposes. They are defined by GAAP or accounting policies, your policies, but also the auditor's interpretations. So over the years, we've done a lot of different things in them. These are just some of the highlights. But we prepaid for the jail. So when the county built the temporary jail, we gave them a couple million dollars. And then we've been receiving a credit for when we send a prisoner over there, we get a reduction on the rates on a per day rate. So that started, it was about a 10-year program. And you see here, this is just the last three, we had $854,000 of prepaid. Then it goes down to 639, 416. Well, those are all expired now in 2014. So as that number has been going down in the reserves, our other reserves are fluctuating a little bit, Michael. We also had a very large liability for a tax challenge to our collections or the municipal code. The claimant is responsible for prepaying it, and then they can challenge it in court. So we had a very large claim here. We did not want to recognize it as revenue because it was still a liability. It wasn't money that we could receive. The auditor said otherwise, so we brought it in as the revenue. But then we had a reserve for that offset. It happened to be settled over more than one year. We received some of it on partial settlement, and then we received it all. So that is now clear. We were the, with some compromise and negotiations, we received most of that. But that's another reason why this number went down and up. So when you're looking at the growth, you've got to look at the details. All the numbers add up to what was changing during that time. And the real thing to remember, that this is all an estimate. It's a moment in time, it's an estimate. These are all actual ending reserves. But when we do the budget, like right now for the 2015 budget, we're forecasting not only the revenues, but all the expenses through this year for the remaining three months, plus all of next year, to come up with an estimated ending 2015. So there is going to be variation there. And then we true it up in April with the reappropriation ordinance. And that's why I left these two on here. So when we did 2014, the estimated ending reserve was 12.8 million, and we had a budgeted deficit of $2 million. We ended up the year a little bit better than we forecasted, this 900,000. On the expense side, we didn't spend it all, but we brought it forward into the next year's budget. So the budget went from 2 million, it's now $2.9 million deficit. And that's reappropriation and ordinances that have happened through the year. So even though we have this small surplus right here, it was a momentary in time. It got brought forward into this next year's budget, and then some, to be honest with you. And we bring forward revenue, if there's revenue, if it's a grant project. But otherwise, the expenditures, unless we say that we're not going to do that project at the end of the year, which doesn't happen too much in the general fund. It's usually a professional service contract or a small remaining portion of a contract that hasn't happened, then those expenditures get rolled into the next year. So right now, the 2015 budget is budgeted, we're at zero. So the forecasted beginning and ending reserve is going to be $14 million. However, that assumes that all of the revenues continue through the year, and then next year, and then the expenses are exactly that. That's not going to happen, obviously. We update the forecast for revisions, we update expenditures, we do ordinances throughout the year. And so that is part of the reason why the numbers you see are changing. But there's a lot of other things that we've done in the general fund. You know, we were keeping this for the civic field turf replacement. We are getting paid from Western over this number of years. It was $40,000 a year, and then it was $20,000 a year, so that one's going up. And then we spent it all, so now it's gone. We had those contingencies here. This was the designated BTV peg television fund. We pulled that out now, and it's in its own fund, but it was shown before in the general fund reserves. A lot of these are just legacies. If we had a better way to do it, I would take them all out of it. I called it noise before, I think two weeks ago, because it is confusing. It goes up and down, and so we track all these. We continue to get donations in the fire department, in the police department, and in Medic One. This was one, if you recall, that happened, it's $40,000. And this one, unfortunately, is going to be here probably for a long time because it had criteria for what we could use it on. And that criteria is kind of stringent, so it might be around for years to come. So a lot of these started before I became the finance director, and I might choose to do them differently, but we're kind of getting to the tail end of them. I would like it to be just more these three lines, like you're seeing here, because it's easier. This is the target. This is, I think I skipped over this one. This one was set by council policy, so I think that you guys could revisit it. But it was set aside as the insurance settlement for future litigation for remediation sites. And we spend that down very slightly every year when Amy Cram bills specifically to a remediation site as the attorney for that. So it's a lot of information. I'd be happy to answer questions or talk to you later, Michael, if you'd like to go through it. But that was kind of in response to your email. And that's all, so unless there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Michael?
Brian, I do appreciate you going over the general fund reserve balances, because I'm trying to figure out which number I should be tracking, which, and... It seems like the total ending reserve number, the top line, it goes up and down more than I can make sense of. So I'm trying to figure out, maybe it's actually the second line is sort of our genuine cushion, and that might be one. I'm just, which of these lines should I most pay attention to if I'm trying to figure out the health of our reserve?
Well, I think, I'd answer it this way. I think I would be more concerned with the trend. And the trend is down, so I would say don't concentrate on the numbers so much as the trend, because we can't continue that. If we hit it this year, or next year, or out here, I can only tell you that it's going to happen in the next several years. I can't tell you the exact year when it's going to happen. So the 12%, all of these are subjective. Colorado Springs has 25% reserve. You know, we're someplace on the conservative middle of that threshold. But GFOA says 1 to 3, we're at six weeks. You know, I think that this is the total number. If you guys want to change your policy on this one, we could talk about changing the policy. But otherwise, we only have, you know, this much of that available today for the general fund. And as soon as we go through this 4.25, you're going to have to change a policy or an ordinance, or give the mayor and administration staff direction, because our financial policy says that we will take action at or below that 12%. So.
Well, going back to that previous graph, the single largest year-to-year drop on there was the $2 million that was invested in the, taken out of reserves to invest in the federal building. So that's a one-time cause for a one-time significant drop, which makes it hard to interpret a trend if I know there's one-time issues in there.
There's going to be unlimited one-time issues that come up. The biggest one that's not in there is all of the contracts. So if you want me to pull out $1 million for all the contracts that aren't settled, and then we can talk about, that number is now, instead of 4.2 million, it's 3.2 million. That's the kind of swings that we have, because we did retro pay two years ago. Actually, this is the interesting thing. If you look right here, where we have a surplus, it's because we didn't have contracts settled. So this year went from 6 to 1,200,000.
Right, and again, that makes it really hard, because any numbers that are published may have to be revised a year or two later. And anyway, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Jean?
I think Brian is right to go to the target, because years ago, we didn't have a target, we didn't have anything like that. And we were asking the same questions that you're asking now. How do you follow all these numbers? Well, look at the target then, like you said, it's in a downward trend, we've got to make it go up. So I think looking at the target's the best way to try to explain it, because we always get told that you have to run the city like you run a business. This is a totally different ballgame. And unless you've sat up here and gone through all these numbers, you can understand why it can be confusing to people.
Anyone else? Well, plenty of time to ask Brian questions in our work session for the budget. Okay, that's the end of this presentation. I'll entertain a motion to approve two sets of minutes, one for September 22nd and one for October 6th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We can abstain, I wasn't on September 22nd.
Okay, we can abstain from both? I guess so.
I guess I have to.
Okay. Minutes pass, 5, 0, with one abstention and one absence.
That's a different one.
Yeah, that was a brain teaser. Okay, next up, any older new business? Roxanne, and then Michael, and then Terry?
My goodness, a lot of old people up here.
I'm just curious, at a future council meeting, can we get an update on whatever happened with the ASB trail? I never heard anything about how that was going to develop or what was going to happen with that, so I'd love to hear about that.
Do you want that to go to Parks Committee, or wherever it would be fit?
I can do it now.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I can get into more detail at a later time. As it stands now, the permits for the ASB trail are being processed this fall. And that construction, which is both, what part of the trail we could use. One of the hiccups was that we didn't have access to the whole roundabout the ASB. And so it's going to be kind of a out and back thing. But it's also going to include a connection between Squalecum Harbor Trail and the ASB. So we're building that part, the port's doing the part on top of the ASB. And then hopefully, it'll be open next spring. But there was a problem with permission. So I was way excited ahead of myself. So now we're just doing the best we can to get access to people out there, and it should happen next spring.
Thanks, yeah, I just got personally excited about it and wondered what happened, so I appreciate the information.
I was pretty excited, too.
Great, thank you. Michael, and then Terry?
Oh, I think it was two weeks ago, I circulated a possible op-ed that reiterates a position we've already taken on PSE and their coal power plant. And the same at the times, if people wanted a chance to read that, to consider before we would indeed, as a council, add our name with other cities joining in, recognizing fully that Councilor Vargas would be recusing herself if this did come to a vote. So if people had a chance to consider, because I'd like to bring it up for a vote.
Okay.
I move that we, the Bellingham City Council adds our name to the op-ed piece draft as presented to the council two weeks ago.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will say that, I think, not having a copy of it in front of us right now makes it... Oh, you do have the copy?
Just one copy.
Okay. Well, regardless, I'm going to have to recuse myself as I work on this issue and am paid to do things like this in my personal professional career. So I will join Pinky in recusing myself from this vote. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of adding Bellingham's name to the letter Michael's referenced, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Your motion dies for lack of a majority, 2-2 with two abstaining.
And an absence.
And one absence. 2-2, 1-2. Wow. Good, thank you. Anything else? Terry?
Oh, yeah, this is kind of real new business. I just wanted to, our Public Works Public Safety Committee, we made it through the bicycle master plan, and we will be hopefully bringing it up for a vote today, tonight. So if you might need to, if you want to bring your bicycle, the master plan with you, if you've got, or not, if you're happy with it. But we will be announcing tonight a couple changes and take a vote on it. So I just wanted to let people know so it wouldn't be a surprise.
Thanks, Terry, appreciate that. I have one item. I've been talking with Mark and our policy analyst, Mark Gardner, and some local architectural and design folks in the community about a long-discussed idea about local preferences for contracts and bids. This is a concept that is understood to not really be legal. And however, there are some interesting discussions that we could talk about around the criteria that is used for local jurisdictions and the purview we do have over criteria and how that's used. The reason I'm interested in it is because some concerns have been brought up to me about the possibility that it looks like, in terms of the design community, not the building community, but the design community, there's certain criteria where local businesses may actually be at less of an advantage. They may actually be disadvantaged because of certain criteria we're using that we might have the ability to tweak. I'm not making any promises here, but I just wanted to bring it up and ask folks if it was okay if we used a little of Mark's time to pursue the idea. And bring us something, if there is anything there to bring. Terry?
I'm kind of glad you brought this up, because I had brought this up some time ago, and I almost forgot about it, with Ted Carlson, Public Works, and presented a couple examples in Skagit County, where they have put local preference at the Skagit Valley College and with, I think it was the city of Mount Vernon, where they have done that. And he was going to bring some information back on it. And it's one of those things that kind of, I think, got lost out there. So hopefully, he's already got some information that he could start bringing, because, yeah, because I'd brought that up with him about, okay, we've got examples out there. If they're doing it and using it, then, yeah. So I think, yeah, I think it would be a great thing for Mark to do, and maybe see if Ted did follow up on that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to see if there's any legitimacy to the fact
He was going to check with them, yeah.
we might be able to level the playing field more for some local design architectural firms.
Yeah, I've heard there's been a number of design things from our, where our own design community could have been well qualified for, but we, you know, if we go out of the area for our own parking garage stuff, or for the, you know, the federal building and things like that, where we're spending money where it could stay in the community, it'd be great if we can find a way to do that.
Yeah, okay, so if that's a head nods. Kelly, did you want to answer?
I'm nodding my head, too. And could we just make sure that legal's in the loop?
Yeah.
So that we don't, so we know what our limits are in what we're doing?
For sure, and I should have prefaced that with, initially, I talked to Peter a little bit before I even pursued this with Mark. So we'll just take some baby steps in that direction and see if there's anything merits keeping going. Okay, great, thank you very much. Anything else, older new business? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into a work session on the 2015-2016 biennial budget. And my understanding is we're going to retire to the mayor's boardroom for this discussion. So we'll check out of here. When that is concluded, I will come back and adjourn the meeting and adjourn us to executive session officially. Around 3:20 is what we anticipated, but I think it might be a little bit later than that. So we'll do it as expediently as possible, or earlier, yeah, we'll see. Okay, thank you.